Is that good?
Good.
All right. Hey, my name is Terri McCabe and I'm on the Privile School Board. I want to thank the PTA and Mountain View High School for hosting this event and thank you to the candidates and all the candidates in the audience for being willing to create a new school district. So let's get to know them. So each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and one minute to answer a question and then two minutes to summarize at the end. And we're gonna have...
What's your name?
Christina.
Christina be our timer. Due to time limits, if we don't get to your question afterwards, you can go and ask the candidates what they want. So the order of answering tonight will be Ada first and Julie second. So introduce yourselves.
Ada, first.
Thank you. My name is Ada Wilson and I'm a longtime resident of Orem, like over thirty-eight years. I originally come from South Carolina where I was part of that process of integrating schools racially. So that has informed what I think and feel about what fair and equal education looks like. I'm the mother of eight children, so I've been involved in education in my local schools since my first was in kindergarten. And so it's been about thirty-eight years of experience in PTAs, school community councils, and the district community council as well. I've served in leadership positions in the PTA. But I think the thing I enjoyed the most was being the newsletter editor because I really love connecting our communities with our schools. I've been on the Alpine School District Board since the election was in 2018. But just before I ran for the board, I became a substitute teacher for a very short time. And during that time, I substituted in a sped class. And during that time, a young lady in the sixth grade learned that she was still going to be in remediation in junior high. She was in tears. And that for me kind of cemented my why. Every child deserves a good education. And when they have learning gaps, learning disabilities, they deserve every effort to help them get up to par. And that's my why. I want our children to have the best possible launch they can have into adulthood. Thank you.
Ready?
Okay.
Hi.
Most of you I know. I know you by name. My name is Julie Walker. Sometimes I'm also known as Carson's wife. But now Carson gets to be known as Julie's husband, so that's super fun for us. I've lived in Orem for quite a few years, probably fifty, twenty years? How long have we been married? Twenty-two years? Anyway. I have served in the PTA. I served eight years as the Orem Council PTA President. So I appreciate Shante and Christina and the PTA putting this on. This is not easy. And it's super nice of you that you are helping the community to see who's running. That's what they need to know. I also served on school community councils at all the different levels. Elementary, junior high, high school, district community council. But this split, whether we like it or not, is happening. And I'm for one, I'm very excited about it. I think this is a great opportunity for change. We can change. We can just look at everything that we've been doing and maybe rethink the status quo of what's been happening. I also have owned my own business for... See, this business has been seven years. Before that, I owned an insurance agency for ten years. But I've also helped other people start their businesses as well. And this is probably closely related to starting a new business. Starting a new district is closely related to starting a new business. And that is where I can be most helpful. So that's me.
Okay, Ada, first question. And if anybody's up at the top and you can't hear, let us know. Okay. If you were board president, what committees would you recommend? And how would you determine the best way to assign members?
Oh, wow. This is a real question. I think the current board has about seven committees that are operating. We pared that down because the Alpine Board will diminish as these new boards take over. So we've already seen that happening. Every board member wants to serve on every committee. I'll just tell you that because at least on our board, we're all fully vested. The committees that are vital are finance, capital planning. Those are vital. I think the whole board should be focused, though, on student learning, which is one committee that I have served on. I think that it benefits everyone to have that be a total board focus instead of just, you know, three people. But there are some that are key that we have to have. And that includes finance, capital planning. Thank you.
Well, like I said, I think starting a new school district is like you're the taxpayers. Your job is to elect board members to serve. I think that we should start with, maybe not committees right off, but why don't we get a committee of parents that will help us find our new superintendent? I would love to get some great parents together that will sign non-disclosure agreements and let them sit down with people that have put in to be superintendent. And then again, with the business administrator. But I definitely think whatever committees we form should have parent representation on them because parents, you guys are smart and you know how to raise your kids and you know what you want. Let's get your voices heard that way.
Okay, Julie.
Yeah.
As a new board, you decide to create a transition plan. What specific components should be included to ensure a smooth cooperative separation and avoid conflicts?
Well, okay, so let's break that down for just a second. So you want to talk about a transition plan. Well, I think first of all, you've got to find seven people with open minds that are willing to listen to everyone's opinion. And then you've got to be a unified board. You have to be together. Even if the votes come out four to three, you still have to say the vote was four to three. The Supreme Court, when they disagree on something, there's always the ruling. And then there's the dissent to tell you why they didn't agree, but the vote went through. So I think we need to organize ourselves with a transition plan of... Well, number one, as you said, you asked about free of conflicts. I'm free of conflicts. I don't serve anywhere else. I am negotiating for and in behalf of this new school district.
Yes. As a new board, you decide to create a transition plan. What specific components should be included to ensure a smooth cooperative separation and avoid conflicts?
Right. I think first of all, we have to realize that on July 1 of 2027, Alpine School District will not exist. It ceases to exist. And therefore, it does not have an interest in hoarding of any kind of doing anything that would benefit itself. Its only interest and the stated interest of the current Alpine School District Board and Supervisor is to end up with three equitable, thriving school districts. As we create a transition plan, key to that will be the superintendent. I think it will also be key that we determine a budget right away because that tells us what we're going to be able to afford to support our teachers, which I think is key. And then we need to determine how, you know, if there are things that we are not seeing in that budget, how are we going to cut costs so that we can?
Ada, how should the new school board ensure the superintendent and business administrator have flexibility to organize the new district while still providing appropriate oversight?
Thank you. I think that's just something that the board determines to do. If you hire a superintendent who, through a careful process of vetting, through very carefully crafted questions, also through a rubric that does involve certain parts of the public, you should have a superintendent who agrees with your priorities. There should not be a tension that's going to hold that superintendent back. You should give that superintendent full reign, given the vision from the board, the goals that you established as a board. And then you let him or her be the professional that they are and take it from there because that's what they're hired to do.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes.
Yes?
How should the new school board ensure the superintendent and business administrator have flexibility to organize the new district while still providing appropriate oversight?
Well, like I said, this is like starting a business. And you guys are going to elect your board of directors for your school district. And we're going to hire a superintendent right off the bat. That's job number one, and a business administrator. And if I've learned anything being in business and serving in the PTA is that when you give a job to someone or a volunteer says, "I'm going to do that in the PTA", let them. Let them do their job. I'm not a micromanager. I don't think that any one board member should be a micromanager. But we should let that superintendent do his job and then let the business administrator. Now, if we're talking about hiring people that currently have jobs doing a superintendent job somewhere or a business administrator job somewhere else and they're doing this in addition to that, that might be a small problem for me.
Okay, Julie.
Yeah.
If maintaining or improving education quality requires additional funding, how would you support raising taxes?
Well, when we talk about raising taxes, we talk about raising property taxes, right? That's what we're talking about, is raising property taxes. But so the schooling or the schools are funded sixty percent by the WPU. Then we get thirty percent from property taxes. Of that thirty percent, half of your property taxes are going to developers in the city of Vineyard, here in Orem. So maybe if we could speak to some legislation about putting a cap on how much of our property taxes can be given away to the developers, that would make it so that we have more money staying in our property taxes to fund the schools. Maybe we start there. Maybe we start with where our tax dollars are currently going.
As the new school district, we have a high percentage of senior citizens on fixed income. We also have a higher percentage poverty rate and a lower average income. This is research that I personally did during the whole split question. And so we cannot rely entirely on tax increases to fund every wish that we have. But that is not part of our school district. We can't do that. I do think there's a little bit of misunderstanding about development, RDAs and that kind of thing. These are property taxes that are not ever collected. Those are deferred. They don't ever come into our coffers at all. So the property taxes we do have are what we have to work with. And I think that it behooves us to look at how we can cut costs so that we are not a burden on our taxpayers and so that we can provide for our teachers.
Okay, Ada. Should parents be surveyed and included in creating district calendars? And would you consider changes such as starting school in September?
Absolutely. Parents are always part of the calendaring committee. There is a process and a procedure. And I expect that our new school district would establish new processes and procedures. But it's very important to establish those procedures. And one of those is setting the calendar. And absolutely, we would be including parents in that conversation. And I think we should include every possibility that's brought into the room. So I think that's an absolute yes. And it translates into other potential ways that we can include parents. I do want to say that committee work that is done by the school district and the board is confidential work. Some of the very hardest things we work out in committee. And so these are not places that we invite Joe Blow or Susie Cuzzi to come. This is where the hard work is done in committee.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. Should parents be surveyed and included in creating district calendars? And would you consider changes such as starting school in September?
Yes, to all of that. Yes, parents should be surveyed. You all should have a say in how your school district's going to be run. But I also think that we could take it a step further. We could go to our school community councils. And every month, at the beginning of the month, give them information about what we're studying that month, what we're looking at, and where we're looking for feedback. So that those school community councils can decide amongst themselves. They can write it all down. And at the end of the month, have a meeting with all of the school community councils coming to see us at our district. We don't have a district office and nor do we need one to start off with. I think we should have our board meetings held at a new school every single... If we have two meetings a month, every meeting should be at a different school in our district so we can see every school, meet every employee, see what that school excels at and what they need.
Okay, Julie. Mountain View is aging and becoming overcrowded. How should the district address facility challenges like this?
That's interesting. There's what, seventeen hundred students in this school right now? When my husband started here, there were twenty-four hundred. So I'm not understanding the math. The math is not mapping there. It may be aging, but they're not overcrowded because there were more students here when he started teaching here in nineteen ninety-six. But when we talk about how we're going to pay for facilities, well, we have Parkside down the street that doesn't fit all their kids. But we do have a third lot where Geneva used to be. Why don't we build a new Parkside on Geneva? And then because the infrastructure's there, clear out the old Parkside, lot it off and let the CTE kids build houses on there and sell them from the district. That makes a little money, makes use of what we have. Why don't we do something with the CTE kids? Oh, I'm good.
Again, the question was just about Mountain View?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to repeat it?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Mountain View is aging and becoming overcrowded. How should the district address facility challenges like this?
I think that we are wise to build schools that are flexible in their enrollment. And I think that there is flexibility here at Mountain View to handle more students. So I think we're okay there. We do need to also realize that ten million dollars were invested in this school not long ago. It has been upgraded in many ways. We also, I helped to advocate for a new track just out there and new softball fields. So there's been a lot of investment in Mountain View High School. I think that there are lots of options that we could look at as far as maximizing the use of our buildings and getting actually a better education experience for our kids through analyzing, are we using our buildings the very best that they could be used? So there's a lot of work to do in that conversation, which should include the public.
Okay. Ada, what should the new school board consider to reduce teacher burnout and ensure long-term retention?
Thank you. That's a really good question that I think we're wrestling with kind of on a national basis because there is a lot put on the teacher's plate today. A lot of socially and emotional work. Just this year, our teachers had to train for the first time in how to stop bleeding. There's just a lot on their plate. So that's why I think we do well to get as lean a machine as we can so that we can offer our teachers the supports they need to handle today's kids. I think our situation with Canyon View Junior High illustrated this very well. Not just students, but teachers also needed professional support in a crisis. And if we don't have that layer of support for our teachers, they carry that burden themselves. And it's not fair having district support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have our elementary kids and then we have our secondaries. In our secondaries, we've done this A-B schedule for years and years and years. A teacher's preparing seventy-five, eighty minutes worth of instruction. I'm not really sure where the research is that this is the best way to teach kids when we could maybe rethink that. We could rethink maybe doing all eight classes a day so that those kids that need math get math every day. Those kids that need a language get a language every day. And they're only having to prepare forty to forty-five minutes of instruction. Because a lot of times, some kids finish it all and then they sit and do nothing for the class period. And some of them take the whole class period. We should look at different ways that we are teaching our kids. We should also maybe look at if we go to doing all eight classes a day, then we could maybe think about doing school Monday through Thursday.
Thank you.
And Friday would be helpful.
Okay, Julie.
Yeah.
During the transition phase, how will you keep all decisions student-focused?
Well, I mean, if we're saying, hey, we want to partner with the parents. We want to partner, we want to use our school community councils just a little bit more than just meeting to decide how we're going to spend trustland money. We want to partner with them. Let's let the parents decide. I would love to look at the different curriculums that we've invested in, that Alpine's invested in, and are those the best ones working for us? But we're going to need our parents to kind of help us out. We're going to need to hear them and hear what they would like to have. And that's it. I mean, let's just involve the parents.
Your turn.
I think our Alpine community and our families are used to a high level of education that their kids are receiving. And I think that it behooves us to make that experience as seamless as possible so that the kids are not aware of any big jolts or any big changes right away. I think we do well to create some continuity so that the kids are not going to be aware of this big change. The other thing that I think we really absolutely, again, we come back to, we need to examine our costs so that we can get the most of our bills, most of our money into the classroom to supporting teachers. I think that that will also ease the transition. So, you know, anything we can do to get, you know, focus on learning gaps and maintaining that level of care that we've already established.
Thank you. Okay, Ada. The Alpine School Board currently livestreams meetings. Could the new district continue this practice? Or do you recommend other methods to keep the community informed?
Thank you. I think that this is a new standard in board meetings that it is expected that that will be the case, that you will livestream. I don't think we should back away from that expectation. And for this reason, you know, I think that my opponent had a wonderful idea about visiting schools. But we'd have to evaluate if each school is wired and ready, tech-ready, to do livestreaming. We found that that was not always the case in every school, that making that happen was costly, very costly. So I think we have to examine that. I'm not the professional in that regard. I think we'd have to rely on our professionals for how we might do that. But absolutely, I think livestreaming is now the norm. And especially live commenting is also expected in our hearings now, which we did provide in our last hearing according to the law.
Okay, let's livestream the meetings. That's awesome. We're doing it now. We can keep that going. But like I said, I've said in, I would like to establish the first one hundred days of what our school district's going to do. And after that first hundred days, we should have a town hall-style meeting with our parents and our stakeholders and bring your kids and meet our new superintendent, meet our new business administrator. Let us tell you the things that we've been working on, the things that we're looking at. But that first hundred days is going to be super important because we got to get ourselves a really great superintendent. But yeah, like I said, we should be holding those meetings. We don't need district offices to start off with. I don't know if any of you have ever started a business, but I've done it with nothing from scratch. And we don't need offices. We just need a school that we can go to.
Thank you. Okay, Julie. You are meeting with the city council member and they ask about safe routes to school. How would you find the answer and follow up?
Ah, well, I've already asked someone at Orem City. And the U.Safe Route routes online for the, on the Orem website are really not easy to use. So we'd like to change that. But those safe routes, the PTA helps quite a bit with those. And so does the SCCs about creating those safe routes for schools. But here's the thing. We have to be able to have a relationship with our city council and our mayor. I think our problems in 2022 with Prop Two could have been mitigated a little bit in the beginning had we opened lines of communication after the new mayor was elected, before he was sworn in. There should have been some communication there between Alpine School District and our mayor so that we didn't feel like we were caught off guard with proposing the split. So open those lines of communication between the new school board and the city.
Yeah, it is one of the roles of school community councils to establish safe walking routes for students. And that absolutely should be coordinated with our city councils, but especially our professionals on the city level. Our professionals with the city, our professionals with the district. Those are the people that need to talk to each other to establish a plan. You know, you have what exists now. Then you have to plan for what should exist in the future. So that's very important. I do want to point out that it's hard to speak with a city leader who had a hidden agenda when he was elected. It became clear that there was no talk of splitting during the campaigning. And it was pretty clear within weeks that this was one of his goals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ada. Recently, ASD posted a graphic about feeder-school patterns. What priority should this issue have? And how would you gather information to make the best decision?
Awesome. Well, again, student learning has to be number one. So the feeder system that we have now is, wow, is a result of our professionals and what they feel is best, that best serves the kids. I think we do have a good opportunity as we look at reconfiguration and consolidation. Can we have true feeders with elementary feeding into a junior high, junior high feeding into a high school? We have that potential and it does have advantages. It also has disadvantages. If you create a true feeder that results in inequities or imbalance in student populations and opportunities, that is a problem. So this is something that we'd have to look at with a rubric with careful study. Thank you.
Well, I think one of the first things we should do in that first hundred days is launch a boundary study of all of our schools. Where are our schools, how many are in each school? And where their boundaries lie? And then I'd like to take the new superintendent and the business administrator And then I'd like to take the new superintendent and the business administrator and lock them in a room with all of the principals with three great big maps and have each, give us three different scenarios of how they would, how they would align the boundaries for each school. Because principals know their people. That's what I know, is those principals know their communities. So we're going to look at a boundary study. On top of that, we got to think about our, our ninth graders. Where, where, what are we going to do with our ninth graders? They need, they need to have, they, they, they may need to go to the high school. They socially, academically, sports-wise. And a lot of parents, when we would poll our parents, that's what, the big question was what to do with the ninth graders. If we do that, we won't have enough seventh and eighth graders to fill five junior highs.
Okay, last question goes to Julie, I believe, right?
Yes.
What should the new school district be known for in ten years from now?
That we made our kids, we educated our kids to be real-world ready, not college-ready. And not just, let's get them graduated. I don't know how many times administrators came to my husband and said, okay, this kid's failing your class. What can he do to just get a D minus so we can graduate him out of here? And we're talking, that is personal financial literacy that they would say that about. That's the most important class they take in high schools, how to manage their money and how to, how to buy a house and how to, how to really adult. And we're asking how, and then my husband would say, well, they never came to class. So what do you want me to do? I just want you to give them an assignment to give them a D minus so they can, we can graduate them. I don't think we want to be known for that. I think we want to be known as a district with an excellent education that graduated our kids real-world ready.
Awesome. In ten years, I hope that we are the best school district in the state of Utah. And I think we have that capacity to be that. And I think that we do that as we communicate what is happening in our schools with our public, that we bring our public into the conversation, that they become a part of our, our, our support system, our cheerleaders. I really would like to see our, our community connect with our, our schools, with each school. Another thing I would like to see is the businesses in this area. I'd like for them to know, how can we collaborate with you to create a really wonderful and robust kids going into the job force? But also excellence. I, I would like to see our, our kids going to high-end schools that demand excellence. I think when we expect excellence, we get excellence. So I, I hope that that, that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
And music, I want music. Every school.
Okay, you get two minutes, Julie's first, to convince everyone to vote for you.
I don't know about this, I don't know about this room, but maybe whoever's recording is, yes. Look, this is awesome. We're getting our own district. We, we, we polled parents from the PTA back in two thousand and twenty-two. And it overwhelmingly came back that we didn't want just an Orem-only district. Because we didn't think we had the tax base for that. But the parents wanted a, a district with a few other cities. However it happened, with or without an inter-local agreement, we're getting our own district. And we get to decide. We get to build it from the ground up. And Ada's done a great job serving on the Alpine School Board. And she's going to continue on the Alpine School Board. If, if, if she's sitting on both sides of the table representing both school districts, who is she really negotiating for? You need one person from some seat four. It's going to be your team leader of seat four. That's going to negotiate for and in behalf of the people of Orem that live in seat four. And you want to pick the person that has the best attitude about this split, and that is me. I'm excited and I'm hoping you'll all get, get in my boat with me and let's go, let's go build us a new school district. Thank you.
Well, I have had a wonderful time going door to door with, in a lot of neighborhoods. They love seeing this map. This is the map of our new school district. People are interested in what it looks like. If you want a copy, I've got a copy for you. But I think as we look at the wonderful opportunities before us, we, we have, this is my folder of ideas for the new school district. But there's no one that understands the process and what is required in this transition, transition more than I do. This is the law. I have been through it line by line. I have written summaries of it for our legislators. I've written, anyway, I, I understand what the law is and what we, what things we, you know, the hoops we have to go through. I also understand the people involved. I have the relationships with people that are important. I have been through the hiring process of a superintendent three times. I have been through the hiring of a, of a business administrator also. I know the process. And there, there is something to be said for continuity and experience. And that is what I bring, seven years of school board experience. I am not looking to, you know, create a dynasty or anything. This only adds two years to my service as a board member. And I just think that I owe it to the public to offer myself, my experience, and the, the continuity of, of leadership that this will provide. I think that I potentially will be the only continuity from the new, from the old to the new. And I ask for your support.
All right, let's give a huge thank you. And good luck to you, the voters, in deciding who to vote for. Remember ballots need to be turned in by November fourth at eight P M. The closest ballot box is at the Orem City Library and the Orem Senior Friendship Center and will be open starting October tenth. And the Orem Center Point Church will also be the voting center on Election Day from seven A M. to eight P M. If we didn't get to your questions, go and ask the candidates. And everyone, travel home safe.